A call to order the regular city council meeting for Monday, June 3, 2024, 5:30 PM. This time I'd ask you to silence your cell phones or put them on vibrate to limit interruptions and to respect the speakers up at the podium. Moving on to item number one on the agenda, that's the roll call.
Burlingame?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Janser?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Pitner?
Padagula?
Here.
Ross?
Here. Item number two, pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is the mayor's report, just a few items since our last meeting. I did take part in a human trafficking summit at Monmouth State University put on by the 31-8 Project. We had a few one-on-ones, also attended the NAS Authority Meeting last week, along with touring the Bayota Plant in Max, getting an update on that project. Task Force 21 last week met with staff members from Senator Hoven's office to get an update on some military funding discussion there. We had some staff meetings here within City Hall, also met with some airmen to discuss home for the holidays. And finally, last Friday, I did get to take part in my first ever roof stomp, so Google it. It was kind of a unique experience up on base. It's a way they honor either an incoming commander or an outgoing commander, and they come home and all of their colleagues are up on the roof, so it's kind of a different kind of a different different deal. It was fun, it was quite the experience. So if there are any questions, I will move on to item number four, 4.1, and that's the city manager's report. Harold.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I guess first I would ask if there's any questions or follow-up on the memo that was included in the in the packet for this evening. If not, just a couple of things. One, I do want to introduce a new employee in this year's budget process. One of the new positions that was approved was our our fleet manager position, so I wanted to introduce Mr. Chuck Schmidt. It's his first day on the job today, comes with a lot of experience, and will have a great opportunity to make a difference within our organization, helping us better plan for and maintain our fleet and our equipment throughout the organization. So we look forward to the hard work that he'll do and the expertise and experience that he brings to that position. And the only other thing I'd like to say is our last city council meeting before our election next week, and I want to thank the candidates that have put their names forward to represent our community, and regardless of the results of who gets elected or not, I appreciate at least making the effort and showing the interest and the passion of our community to put your names forward to serve in this capacity, and I look forward to seeing what the results are next week and potentially working with the future council in the near future. So with that, if there's no other questions for me, I have nothing else to report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Harold. Any questions of our city manager? Seeing none, welcome Chuck, welcome aboard Team Minut. Moving on to item 4.2, the city attorney's report, Steph.
Mayor, members of the council.
Could the new person raise their hand or stand up?
Yeah, he did.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Okay, sorry, thank you.
Okay, Steph.
I have a written report, it's attached, let me know if you have any questions.
Are there any questions or city attorney? Seeing none, we will move on to item, action item five on the agenda, that's consent items. We have 12 items on our consent agenda. We've been asked to pull item 5.3 by Councilman Burlingame. Are there any other items to be pulled? Seeing none, what are the wishes of the council?
Move consent on the remaining items.
We have a motion by Paul, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mark, any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Unfortunately, we're in a bit of a triangle here, and it's refreshing, so I will call regular roll, Pitner?
Yes.
Padagula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Burlingame?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Moving on to item 5.3, it was asked to be pulled, what are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Scott?
I just asked this to be pulled so I could abstain.
Is there any objection? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pitner?
Yes.
Padagula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes. Moving on to action item six is the April 15 and May 6 executive session recordings. What are the wishes of the council? Carrie?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to release those two sessions' recordings.
Second.
We have a motion by Carrie, second by Paul, any further discussion?
Yep.
Carrie.
So I know that these recordings are exempt under state law, however, I support releasing them because I do not believe releasing them will have an adverse effect on the city of Minot.
Any further discussion?
I guess I would like to hear Mr. Mayor what Stephanie has to say and what her thoughts are on this. Go ahead, Steph.
Mayor Alderman Balding, Burlingame, so, excuse me.
It's all right, it happens.
So recordings of executive sessions can be disclosed upon a majority vote of the governing body. We've received an open records request for these specific recordings, and we need to present it to the council for a majority vote on this particular issue because unauthorized disclosure of the recording by staff without consulting the council is a C felony offense. So despite the fact that there may not be an adverse fiscal impact at this particular juncture, the city manager informed me that the purchase agreements were executed last Friday, is that correct?
It's my understanding, Mr. Swanson, that's still correct, right? Yeah, we closed on the purchase of the property on Friday of last week.
Okay, so that particular transaction has been closed, so it's just up to the council on whether or not it wants to release those particular records, and the the discussion would be to weigh whether to release the the records in the interest of transparency or releasing those executive session records will kind of provide some insight into others as to the negotiating process that the city employs when negotiating these types of agreements, which isn't traditionally something that's been disclosed, but it's in the discretion of the council if it would like to disclose those records.
Mark?
So if if we pass this motion, does the request for Attorney General's opinion continue anyway?
Yes, it does, because that's a whole separate question.
So the so the Attorney General's going to rule on whether what was done was appropriate or not, I guess why wouldn't we just wait to find out what the opinion is?
That's really not what the question of the Attorney General is. I mean, Mr. Wolfsky, do you want to come up here and explain what you've asked the Attorney General for?
Mayor Ross, Councilmember Evans, Councilmember Janser, I've requested an Attorney General opinion on two matters related to these executive sessions. On May 6, I think the the most likely, or the request is to act whether on whether the stated agenda and the actions of the council on that day were essentially in concurrence. The stated agenda listed a potential real estate purchase or something along those lines, and the very specific motions of that meeting were were very different than what was listed on the agenda. The second part of the request to the Attorney General is to consider whether the actions potentially on April 15, I have no actual knowledge of what took place on that, I only speculate based on how most real estate transaction discussions would take place, is that a portion of that meeting may very well have been about the decision whether to negotiate for the real estate or not. As I see it, a real estate decision comes with two parts. Do you want to purchase it is the first part, the second part is what should we purchase it for, or what are we willing to pay for it? And the question I've asked the Attorney General to consider is whether that first part is indeed protected by executive session or not. And the email I got from the Attorney General's office indicated that they hope for resolution of these issues prior to having to issue an opinion. It is my intent to continue to seek that opinion because I think what we have here is a potential area of law that needs clarification, and the Attorney General's office is the the one entity that is empowered to provide that clarification. So that's that's the request for the Attorney General's opinion on this matter.
Anything further, Mark?
No, not at this time.
Okay, Steve, you had a question?
I, no, just a comment, I mean, it sounds like an interesting legal issue, which, you know, is obviously between you and the AG's office at this point. It is kind of strange what Mark pointed out, that this will reveal our philosophy and our strategy, which may kind of impact how we deal with things in the future and how people wanting to sell us things deal with us in the future. I think what you'll find if you look at the videotape or watch the audiotape is that we're real cheapskates when it comes to spending the public's money. I don't think that's a secret, but it would be kind of strange to have that out there in the open about us, let's say bickering, but arguing how little we should spend on this. So, but I guess Carrie's right, it's probably a good thing to have that in the open. I think there are some people who don't think we're cheapskates and we're spendthrifts, but I think the audio will prove the opposite. And it's a good thing for people to know either way.
Mayor Ross, if I may, Alderman Padagula, to be honest, I am not particularly interested in the negotiating strategy of the city. My hunch would be that the city participates in negotiation for real estate, much like the the rest of us do, which is trying to pay as little as possible for things, which I fully support. What is more interesting to me in the course of this process and the way this real estate purchase unfolded is the rationale for the purchase itself, which is a part of the decision-making process that, as a citizen in this community, I would simply like to see. That is the rationale through which we go through making a decision, which in this case, the council acted to actually spend more money on the purchase and the demolition than it would have been to accommodate the property in its place, and to see its, you know, continued existence. So especially in a circumstance where we see the city spending more money than the alternative, the rationale for that choice is what I am most interested in observing, and then also establishing with the Attorney General's opinion whether the actions or those discussions, if they took place, and I only am speculating that they may have, if they took place, whether those particular discussions are protected by the executive session exemptions. I think that's a question that may need an Attorney General, and that's why, an Attorney General's opinion, and that's why I've requested it.
Any further discussion or any further questions? Lisa?
Thank you, just a comment. I'm not an attorney, I don't pretend to be an attorney, and I trust attorneys' judgments, and I think that the Attorney General is being asked to weigh in on this, and it would be my preference to wait for that office's answer before we took any action. I don't think that there is something that that needs to be shared this evening, there's no time constraint on this issue, and so I would much prefer to hear back from the Attorney General before I approve this.
Anything else from the council? Thank you, Mr. Wolfsky. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
No.
Olson?
No.
Pitner?
Yes.
Padagula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Burlingame?
No.
Motion fails. Three yeses to four noes, right?
That is correct.
Yep.
I think there's four yeses and three noes.
Burlingame and Olson. Oh, sorry, sorry. Motion passes four to three.
Okay, now moving on to item seven on the agenda, personal appearances. Now is an opportunity for those who wish to step forward to speak to the council, we just ask out of respect for other speakers to keep your comments to a five-minute limit. So now is your opportunity to step forward. Seeing none, we will move on to action item number eight, that's miscellaneous and discussion items, 8.1, community contribution presentations. We will be starting off with Minot Commission on Aging, if they are present.
Hi, I'm Valerie Millen with Minot Commission on Aging.
I'm Deborah Lehrer from Minot Commission on Aging.
We apologize, we're not ready because Roger is running late, so we didn't know if you wanted to tell us what we know, or if you wanted him to go last.
Excuse us. Can we just let them go after the other organizations?
Yeah, that's fine, yeah. Are there any objections? Seeing none, we'll move on to First District Health Unit.
As long as you hit the star over there, it should work, she'll pull it up.
All right. Good evening, I'm Holly Breckus, I'm the Executive Director at First District Health Unit. I just threw together a few slides. In my funding request, I have some numbers and things, I won't go through those, I'll let you guys look at those numbers, but I just just want to remind the council of our mission. Our mission of public health is to make a positive impact on the health and welfare of our community through service, education, prevention, and collaborative service, or collaborative activities, and our vision statement is healthy people and healthy communities. Instead of kind of running through all the services that we provide at First District, I did that last year, it's the same same group of you, so I thought I'd focus a little bit different this year, and I wanted to highlight one of the programs that we're doing at First District that's kind of new and we're excited about it. Some of you I know have seen it out in the community at different meetings and things, but maybe you remember back in 2022, we did some focus groups, we did two in the city of Minot. I know, I think Harold was participating, and I think other woman Evans did as well, and so we kind of just went out and asked people, what are your concerns in the community? And as you can probably imagine, mental health rose to the top in all the focus groups, and we did them out in our counties as well. And so one of the ways that we've been trying to focus a little bit on mental health, and in public health, we really try to have population-based strategies, things that are going to impact the whole community as opposed to just individual services. So we partnered with a company called Credible Mind, and, let me see, yep, it's a mental health platform, and the nice thing about it is it's free to anybody who wants to use it, that's a project that we fund, and it's free and confidential, it's 24/7, people can access it. And just a little bit of some interesting things about people and mental health is that 50% of people will experience some kind of mental health condition in their lifetime. So half of the population will have mental health problems that they might want to seek help for or worry about. One of the interesting things, I think, that maybe not a lot of people know about is the 75%, 75% of the people who attempt to work on their mental health do so on their own. Looking at the next number up on the slide, the 95%, that's the kind of the troubling part, was that 95% of the resources that they can find online are not necessarily credible. So Credible Mind is a collaboration between NACO, which is the National Association of City and County Health Officials, and Credible Mind, and they've come together to kind of work on this national mental health crisis that we're having. Just to kind of give you an idea of what some of the key messages are with our, this mental health platform, the messages to the communities are, you're not alone, you have choices, you can trust us, and it's also more than just mental health on this platform. And I just, and it's kind of hard to see, but these are just some of the topics that are looked at quite frequently on our platform, so things like communication skills, goal-setting, leadership, financial wellness, all of these are topics that people can go in and look at and better themselves in whatever way they see fit. I thought it was interesting, at the last council meeting, the CGB was talking about some of these exact same things, mental health, financial wellness. These are things that people can work on at no cost, all they have to do These are things that people can work on at no cost. All they have to do is have access to the internet. So we, and we brought this information to both of the libraries in town so people can have the information and have access to that information. So there's a couple of ways that people can use the Credible Mind platform. You can sign up and you can have an account. And what that allows you to do is do some, it has assessments that you can do. So if you're wondering, like, how am I with anxiety, for example, you can go and take a quick little assessment. Most of the assessments take three to five minutes. I think the longest one is 12 minutes. And if you sign up and create an account, you can actually track your progress. So let's say you take an assessment and you get a rating or a score, and you work on it, and there's things you can do, like podcasts and articles and videos, all kinds of tools that you can use to work on a certain area. And then you could come back and take an assessment again, and you can see your progress. If people aren't comfortable signing up, even though it is, it's HIPAA compliant, we don't see anybody's information, but you can just use it as a guest as well. If you just want to go in and check it out before you commit to putting your name and your, you know, email in there, and what they do is they kind of customize it to your search history. So if you're looking at maybe something about work-life balance, and there's a new podcast that comes out on work-life balance, they would send you an email saying, hey, there's this new podcast that you might be interested or something. That's how they check some of that, what you're looking at. We, we don't see, like I said, we don't see that individual data, but we do see aggregate data. So that's helpful from the perspective of we can see who's using the platform as far as the age ranges, the, like, is it men or women using it? How frequently people are using it, what type of resources they're looking at? And I had given to Michaela when I got here, uh, some handouts. One is just some information about the platform. There's a QR code you can click on there and go in and see what's, what's cool about the, the site. And then the other page is actually our, the first month, we launched, launched it in April. We did that during Public Health Week. So this is the statistics that we got for the first month that we had this out in the community. One of the, trying to look at my notes here. So we'll get these reports every month, and we can see who's using it. We've did kind of a soft launch to start. We put it on our social media platform. We were out in, um, we went to some community, community meetings, and that we showed this out to the regular partners that we see and interact with. We're going to be starting to do some targeted kind of interventions this month. We're going to try to go to, uh, maybe talk with school staff. I know we had, came and talked to the, the management team at the city to show them, hey, this is a platform that you can use for your employees. We do that, we started doing that at First District, um, so that we have, you know, a, a source for our staff to make sure that they're taking care of their mental health. So that's, that's our newest project that we're, we're working on around mental health. We, we try to focus on the needs that are identified in the community. And we're always open to suggestions on what, what kind of things can we be doing to better your, the community here in the city of Minot? So with that, I will open it up to any questions.
Any questions, Scott?
Holly, first off, thanks for coming, and, and I want to thank you for the Credible Mind. Um, my employer has been using it as, as a tool for the services that we provide, and we've also been encouraging our, our staff to be part of it. And, and I appreciate the fact that it's credible mental health information, because so much of what's available for free on, on the internet may not be necessarily evidence-based. I, I, I appreciate to hear that you're using it as a city, and I'd like to encourage the city to take advantage of that, and the city employees to take advantage of it, as we often hear about. It, it's actually interesting, as I, I look at your top topics on this, and I see flourishing and languishing, and that feels like a, uh, great explanation for about 85% of our society right now. So as we try, try to build our way out of that, um, being able to use tools like this that are free, um, and, and whether in addition to or in place of other, um, help that you might need. So, um, what would your, be your recommendation if, if employers in the community were looking to add this to, to, as a tool for HR? How, how would they best do that? Do they reach out to you? What's the, the best approach?
Yeah, we can absolutely come and do a presentation to the organization. We've done that a few times. Like I said, we were kind of doing a soft launch, but we have our workforce development coordinator, Amy. I think you met Amy. She's super excited, and that's one of her roles is community outreach, so we can go to any employer, and she walks you through and shows you what the platform looks like. We actually did, when we launched this, and again, it's, it's flexible in how you want to do this with your employees, but we, um, offered an incentive to our employees. So we said, we'll give you, I think we gave them so much, so many minutes in a, a day or a week or something, that they could go on during their work time and, and research the platform, because we thought, well, if we want them to tell people about it, they need to know how it works. So we gave them some time on their work time, and if anybody who went in, logged in, and did at least one assessment, they were in the pool for an incentive. And we couldn't see who necessarily was all on the platform. The developers, we gave them a list of our employees with their email address, and then they, they did all the aggregating, and they just pulled the name and said, okay, this is the person that gets the incentive. So, and that, and that's something that we could do with the business. All we would need is the list of your employees and their email addresses, and then they could do the background work, so it would be confidential from an employer standpoint. Does that kind of answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Holly, one of the other things you are working on is to put in some information based on, uh, local mental health providers. So if there are mental health providers that are out there that want to be in there, because obviously, um, even though a lot of us do try to, to fix ourselves, there, there is a time and a place for mental health treatment. So those providers need to be contacting you as well to get their information in.
Yes, that's one of the things that we're promoting too, when we're going out and doing these presentations, is if, if there's a source that you know of, we can definitely put them onto our resource list. And if you go on the webs or go on the platform, you can see where it says community resources. And something I didn't mention, so thanks for reminding me, there is a, an immediate help button on the platform. So it will, it will give you connection to the 988, um, number, so that if you are having, you know, obviously, if you're having a serious crisis, we want you to get help right away. This is more of an early intervention type strategy. But it, it really can help all the, all the gamuts in mental health.
Thank you, that's all.
Okay, just as a point of, just some housekeeping, Jenna from Finance sent, uh, all the council members should have it in their inbox, the, the community requests, uh, applications and, and amounts.
Carol?
If I can add to that. So we have a little bit of overlap of timing, so we scheduled everyone to come and present tonight, but the deadline for actually submitting the application was also today. So the application materials will be included on the city website at the end of this week, probably tomorrow, so that those are available publicly. And then just to note that First District's health request this year is for $318,000 for 2025, which is the same amount that we have funded in 2024. So they've asked for no increase in funding for 2025.
Any further questions? Paul?
Thank you, Mayor. Not, maybe not for Holly, maybe this might be a Dave question. We, we talk about, Holly, you guys receive funding from the county, correct?
Yes.
As well. We talk about the double taxation there. Is that, is, is that removed when the county, their property tax and, and funds First District? If you live in the city of Minot, are you getting hit twice? You are getting hit twice. Okay. No, that's, that's
Okay.
Answers my question.
Nothing further?
Steve? This may be more of an issue for the State Health Department, but lately, some of the stories about avian flu have been worrisome. Are there discussions about what might happen and how we might surveil more effectively and jump into action if this thing blows up like unfortunately the last pandemic did? I, part of the reason I ask that is, is my wife, and I think I, to some extent, you know, feed some blue jays in her backyard, and I'm wondering if they're going to kill us. Like, it's like Hitchcock movie, The Birds, but more subtly.
I definitely, I don't know, Lisa's here, maybe she can answer better to that whole environmental health issue. That's not something I'm super familiar with. You know, we get updates from the State Health Department, but until it impacts us, um, yeah, we don't, definitely don't want to go back to a pandemic-type situation.
That they are on top of it.
Yeah, we, we have staff that monitor that, and we get updates frequently. And any information that would be important for, you know, city officials or community to know, we would definitely share that out.
Because I'm thinking too of the, you know, substantial cattle population, dairy cattle we have around here, and the fair coming up in a couple of months, it seemed like that could be a, a vulnerable time for people.
Yes, I know they do testing with the milk and things like that and keeping up on that. I, if I, I can send some information.
Sure.
Sometimes we'll get alerts from the State Health Department, just so we know, hey, this is what's happening, and if it's moving towards our location or whatever, we, yeah, we're definitely on top of that. We don't like to worry the public unnecessarily sometimes, you know?
Right, right. But I think, you know, to be, to be vigilant, sort of like storm watches, the weather service issues, you know, I think when things like that happen, you, you want to be ready just in case. You know, for me personally, I just mentioned, we, we feed, we also feed the squirrel too. I hope that they won't arrest us for that, but, um, we give them a little portion of peanuts. But, um, more pressing thing is we recently ordered some cheese made from raw milk. And I guess I never thought about that. I mean, it's supposedly aged enough where it kills the harmful bacteria, but, uh, some places have cautioned against using raw milk products, even if they are in cheese form. So, and I'm having second thoughts about that. But I mean, I mean, the, the point is that even our personal behavior, our daily behavior, our routine behavior now, you know, may need to be reexamined periodically, depending on what happens out in the world.
That's a great example of public health. That's what, we have people working behind the scenes all the time, making sure that, that, you know, raw milk was a big thing in the last legislative session. And so we monitor that, and we educate the public on, you know, the benefits versus the rest of raw milk and things like that. So absolutely, yeah.
Well, I feel much better having, hearing you say that you're on top of it.
Yes. And we have a whole, you know, we have an emergency preparedness department in our health unit. It's a department of one, but he's very up on, on top of, okay, what happens if we have this kind of situation? So yes, we are prepared for those kind of things.
Thank you.
Seeing nothing further. Thank you, Holly. Moving on, moving back on the agenda, I see Roger kind of snuck in here. Roger, you ready? You're up to bat.
You're lucky. Your staff was like really
It was a test.
It was a test. They passed the flying colors.
They were not, um, they were ready.
They were, they were absolutely ready. It was a test, A+. Did you get the rest of the week off?
Yeah, I, I was, I'm sorry, I was at another appointment, and I was driving across town, and I hit every, uh, red light, and, uh, there's construction out there. I didn't know if anybody knew that.
That's Stefan there. That's the traffic engineer.
Well, and, and chief, I didn't want to speak. I forgot my seatbelt, so.
You're just digging yourself in, dude.
It's always something with Roger. So, I'm Roger Reich. I'm the Executive Director for Minot Commission on Aging, and I appreciate that you moved me back in the agenda. I'm sure my staff appreciates that you moved me back in the agenda. And I, I want to thank the mayor and the city council for, for letting us speak tonight on, uh, on these issues and things like that. I'm going to give a, a little brief history of Minot Commission on Aging. It was a brainchild of Chester Wrighton back in 1973, brought a group of individuals together, and, uh, and then brought it to the city council. And the city council unanimously, uh, approved Minot Commission on Aging to be established, and that's how we started back in 1973. And in that, in that first year, we were at the Carnegie Center. That was our first, um, senior center. So you can imagine what that was like there, um, knowing what the Carnegie Center is now. And then we moved across, uh, across the road. We were on Bertie, uh, and I, I believe it's the building that, uh, that the Independence, Inc. is in now, or in that area. That's, that's where the building was. And then we moved to our present location in 1986. And we bought the Parker Hotel. And we viewed, did that with the use of city funds to, uh, that they sold the, the Southwest site and bought the, and helped us buy that, uh, the Parker, first floor of the Parker Hotel back in the day in 1986. And I think, uh, over, over time that you have been in there and seen that we've updated it in the, in recent years, and, and even that, I say that, it's been 10 years since we've done the updates to the, to the Parker. So we've, we've done a, a bang-up job to keep that in the shape that it's in. And, and again, um, the partnership that we created with, with the city has helped us do that type of stuff. You know, kind of, you kind of know our programs. Uh, uh, our Meals on Wheels program is our biggest program that we serve the community with. We do about 400 home-delivered meals a day, and another 100 to 125 to 150 congregate meals a day. We do a Cafe 60 breakfast in the morning, and I bet we have 100 people in there every day for breakfast. A lot of old bachelor guys, old widowers, things like that, or, or old men that got kicked out of their houses because their wives were tired of them being at home. So they come in, have breakfast, and it's a different group than we've ever seen at our lunch, uh, congregant lunch. It's just a different group of guys, and it's just a, a fantastic, uh, place to come in the morning and have, have breakfast. And then again, we do our home-delivered meals, uh, every day, uh, with the help of, numerous, we do 16 routes. We have tons of volunteers that come in along with our staff to do that Meals on Wheels route, um, every day. And we, we do, like I said, we do 400 meals out, out the door for citizens of, of Minot. On weekends and holidays, we supply them with a, a frozen meal so that they don't go hungry. Seven days a week, we, we do that. So our staff is doing about 500 meals a day, just to make sure that we have those, those, extra meals on hand for our seniors to do the Meals on Wheels program. We also do a health maintenance, uh, program at the, at the Parker, and, uh, we do some home visits too. We have nurses, uh, that, uh, work for us, and they do foot care. And we have seniors come in, they get foot care, and then, uh, they do basic, um, medical checkups on those, on those seniors, you know, blood pressure, that type of thing, making sure that they're up to date on their flu shots and other type of things, and, and just do an overall wellness check on them. And as we all know, as we get older, our foot, our feet are, are a big part of our wellness. If we have issues with our feet, we have issues. And that could be, uh, signs of, uh, being diabetic, or first signs of not knowing that you're diabetic, and then be, finding out that that could happen. We have, uh, made referrals for numerous, uh, seniors to get, uh, into a podiatrist to get work done that might not have happened if they hadn't come seeing, seen us. Uh, one of the big things that's happening with our health maintenance right now is, uh, there's a waitlist. There's about a 70-person waitlist for, for our health maintenance right now in the city of Minot. I guess there's been some changes to Medicare on what they'll pay for a podiatrist to do, so we're taking on that, that extra amount of foot care clients that normally would have gone to podiatrists or, or into those type of offices. So again, we have a 70, 70-person waitlist that we're trying to get through. And it's, and it's tough. Even if we did, uh, foot care seven days a week, that waitlist grows, and, and it's tough to get those people in, but we're trying our best to do that. And again, uh, we're hiring a, another part-time nurse to, to help us get through that, uh, through that with, with, with this. We have seen clients recently that haven't had their, uh, uh, feet taken care of since the pandemic. So you can imagine what that's like for, for those clients that, uh, might not have had foot care for 18 months to two years. So we're doing that, and we're doing a, a great job. Some of the things that I, I'd like to tell, tell you about too, is that we partner with a lot of different agencies in the city of Minot. We, we partner with the Minot Library. They come in and do, uh, tech, tech support for our seniors. They show them how to use their laptops, their iPads, and their smartphones, so that they can stay connected to their, their family and friends that might not live in town. This is a great service that the library has, comes in and helps, helps our seniors with, and you can't even imagine how many people that, that it's helped over the years. We also work with NDSU Extension Services. If you don't know anything about, uh, Extension Services, it's one of the greatest things that Minot has, is to have an office in town that provides, uh, lots of educational benefits to our, to our public, um, from youth to, to seniors. NDSU comes in and does healthy cooking classes for seniors. Lots of times, these seniors have cooked for large families, and now they're just cooking for one or two people. So they look at different ways to help, help them prepare foods, what to look for in grocery stores, what, what kind of fresh vegetables to look for and that type of stuff. We also do fall prevention. We do that in partnership with, um, NDSU. We just finished up a class last month, and we had 13 participants. And what that does is help seniors stay safe in their homes, set, make sure that they understand what, what's going on in their homes, move in sure that they understand what, what's going on in their homes, move in rugs, putting up arm, arm bars and things like that in their restrooms and, and doing all the safety things, arm rails and on steps, just doing all those types of things so that they don't fall. Because if somebody falls and there's a few of us that are in that category, we're going to break something and it's going to be tough to rehab from that, that situation. So that's always a good, good class too. And, and then the Extension Service has so many different educational benefits that, that they bring in from the, from the Fargo University. So it's, it's just really a great service that we partner with them. We also partner with Service Basin Transportation. Service Basin Transit is a, is a service that allows people to get around curb to curb in the city of Minot. Many of our seniors use that bus service. And it's great. It's a great service. It brings them down to the senior center. It also takes them to other appointments, whether that's doctors or to the grocery store, whatever that is. And they do serve the city of Minot now by going to Bismarck. So that allows a lot of seniors to ride the bus down to Bismarck and, and get them there. And we do a great partnership with, with the Service Basin. We also are part of the Minot Senior Coalition. And I'm sure a lot of you remember, just a few weeks ago, we had the salute to seniors in auditorium. And there was probably, oh, 400 to 450 seniors that take part in that. And they come in for the educational benefit of that, the entertainment that's provided and, and the lunch set that goes along with that. And then the, just the social, socialization and seeing other people from other towns and things. So that's a great, great, great thing. And it's, I think, this was 35 years this year of the Senior Coalition Salute to Seniors. We also do a partnership with the Park District and Trinity Health to do a Senior Day at the Zoo. And we've done that for many, many years now. And that's just a great, another great opportunity for seniors to get out, to see the zoos, to see different, different things. And we partner with, with those two agencies to do that. And then we partner with the state fair to do a Senior Day at the fair. And again, just a great opportunity for them to get out and see the different things that Minot has to offer. So with all these things that we do, I think it's very important that, that Minot Commission on Aging is there. We're the voice for the seniors. We help them figure out what's, what's available. As you all know, as, as things have changed, when you make that phone call, you don't always get to talk to a person. Well, we're that person that, that they can call. And maybe we might not have the right answer for them, but I think we're usually able to find that answer for them and help them navigate some of those difficult areas that wouldn't be, be, that they wouldn't be able to get through if we weren't there. So again, that's kind of us in a nutshell. And I'm happy to answer any questions that I may.
Any questions of Roger? Oh, Scott, go ahead.
Roger, how is the need, you mentioned you're doing about 400 meals. How does that, is it up from past years down? Where are we at as far as the need in our community?
Yeah, since Mayor, Councilman Burlingame, the, the meals have gone up probably since the pandemic, probably 45, maybe 50% since that. It has just been a steady growth. And I think it's just, there's a lot of factors in there, you know? Things have changed. Everything has gone up. Inflation has hurt, hurt our people that are on fixed income. A lot of those seniors have to make decisions on whether, are they going to eat, pay for their medication, or pay rent, or how, or whatever utilities that might be. And I think that's, that's drives that system of having more and more seniors on the, on the meal program. And I think it was, it turns into, you know, just, just that assurance that they get, get something hot to eat that day.
And how, and also during that period of time, how much is your, the cost per meal increased along with the cost of inflation and stuff like that?
Probably at the time of pandemic, the cost per meal was probably about 10, 10, oh, probably about 1085. And right now, we're at 1135 per meal. And, and again, we, we use all sorts of different buckets to help pay for those meals. Obviously, we, we get federal money, state money. We do get mill levy money from the county, city money, grants, donations. Our donations have gone down drastically. I, I think right now we're at about a dollar fifty per, per donation. So that's one of those things that, again, you feel, you feel the pain that they must feel if they can't donate. And I think some of the ones that donate the most are the ones that can't donate the most. And, and so that's part of that. So yes, it has, has gone up. All you got to do is go to the grocery store and know how much food costs. And if we're, if you're doing 400 meals to 500 meals a day to 600 meals a day, you know how much, you know how, how much hamburger we're going through or, or roast or turkey or whatever it is that we're serving that day.
Have your, has your overall funding then went up 40 to 50% in the last, in that amount of time?
No. It has gone up. But, but as you know, when you're, when you're dealing with the federal government, there, there, we're on this continuing budget process right now. So funding for the Older Americans Act hasn't really caught up to 2024 funding. So we're, we're still behind the power curve. It, it gets better. But like right now, we get, we, we send in our monthly reports to state and we will be out of money when we send in this next report. And that's for May. And our, our cycle runs July to June. So the month of June and part of May will, will be completely out of pocket type funds to, to fund our services. There won't be any federal or state funds coming in after, after we do the report this next month. And that's, that's just the, the way it is. And.
Was that, did that consistently happen prior to the pandemic?
Yes, it's happened quite, quite a few years. And that, and it's just one, again, we can't, we can't get, get ahead of the, the inflation curve when they continue to do, continue, continuous funding through the federal process. And again, Aging Services is a good partner with us. But when the, when, just like everybody else, when the, when the governor sets the budget, Aging Services goes with what, what they're told to do. And that's what, you know, every, every one of us does, right? I mean, when you set a budget, that's what you try to stick to and you try to do what is necessary. So Aging Services, even though they know we need more money, there, there's this, the opportunity to get it isn't, isn't there all the time. And I, I kind of like that, to, to piggyback on the mill levy from the county. One of the things that, and I know First District does this too, but one of the things that we do is we do a lot of services in Ward County. You know, we have eight other senior centers in the rural area of Ward County that get, get part of that mill levy funding that we get through senior mill levy. So we split that with them. We're the ninth senior center. So we're, we're part of that group. Again, and then what they need to continue their services out, out there. And then there's two other service providers also that get mill levy funding. So, so we split it with them too. And then, like I said, so we have meal sites in Surrey, Sawyer, Carpio. We do foot care in Berthold, Burlington, Surrey, Sawyer, Carpio, Kenmere, Douglas. So we're traveling. So that, those expenses are, are eaten up by, you know, that mill levy is eaten up by those out county services. So that, that's part of that, that, when you say, are we being double billed? I don't know if that's the right way to say it because we're doing services out in the county and, and you have to pay with, pay for those some way too. And of course, as, as expensive as it is to do things in Minot, when you start adding in doing things in the, in the rural area of, of Minot, you just add cost and, and things like that. So that's part of that mill levy question too.
Okay. Steve?
I just wanted to thank Roger and his staff for their almost heroic efforts to help the most needy, whether financially or nutritionally or whatever. And that frankly is one of the most unpleasant parts of my job. I represent the city council on the Commission on Aging, is to tell Roger and his people not to bother asking for any more money because it's not going to come through. And, you know, we respond to political pressures. And I think this is a good example of how trying to cut budgets in the mill levy really have very negative implications for our community and family members. It could be our grandmother, it could be our aunt, it could be someone down the street who's been in a lifetime of service and now depends on a volunteer once a day for social contact and your nutritionally sound meals. You know, I wish people would, would understand that, that there is a cost, a human cost. And, you know, we're certainly, we've been cheapskates and I've, I've been part of that. But I think there are basic human needs that are really on the edge of not being fulfilled anymore. We each have our pet population or pet project or pet group of people that are affected. But I think the elderly could be, hopefully will be all of us at some point. And I think we need to be mindful of showing respect to them and making sure they at least have decent nutrition. So I, I urge you not to ask for more money than you didn't. And I feel very badly, but that's, that's the political reality we face.
Absolutely. I mean, and we understand that. We understand that, you know, that, that you have to do the things that, that, that you do. And, and again, do I think that we're an important service? Absolutely. I wouldn't, wouldn't have done this for 16 years if I didn't think that was important. And I, and, and if I didn't think that we were making a difference in, in the community every day. And as, as Steve said, and I know some of you have done routes for us on different days and been part of that. And you've been to some of the homes that, that we go to and it, it's not fun. And, you know, we, we do the best that we can with some of the people that are living on the edge of different things. You know, we don't want to talk about it, but, but, you know, we, we serve a lot of meals up in those north area that aren't hotels anymore, as I say. And, and that's part of life. We have seniors that are living there, paying rent. And part of, part of the deal is we take meals to them every day so that they're at least getting fed. And again, that's part of, part of them not being homeless or, or being on the street. So they're, we're taking care of those people too. And again, any day that you walk into the, to the park or you'll see 16 routes going out and the volunteers are happy to be there, they're happy to do what they're doing. They make that personal engagement with those seniors every day on that route. If something happens, they're that first line of, of not, of notes that we get a hold of the emergency contact. Sometimes we've had volunteers, we had volunteers save a lady from a burning house and got, stay there with her until her, her family got there. That's the type of things that we do. Not every day, but it happens. And, and if it was your mom or my mom, we'd be glad somebody was able to do that and making that connection to that person. And, and the friendships that those volunteers make to those seniors out there, oh my goodness. The friendships that my staff makes. You know, it's just, it's just fantastic. And it's, it's one of those things that it's, makes you feel good, but it's, it's necessary. It's a necessary service to do every day.
Paul?
I think I understood this from Steve's comments, but is the, the ask the same as last year?
Yes, the request is for $154,500, which is the same as what we funded in this year's budget.
Okay, thank you.
But if you wanted to add more, we would be, we'd be happy.
Seeing no other questions or comments, thank you, Roger.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Next up on the agenda is the Minot Area Chamber of Commerce EDC.
Good evening, members of council. Mayor Ross, thank you for letting us present to you our 2025 budget request. I'm Breka Kramer, the president and CEO of the Chamber EDC. We kick off every presentation just to give a quick line of sight on our mission. Obviously, it's our kind of guiding principle of how we operate at the Minot Area Chamber EDC. And of course, our vision, which is to be the go-to organization for our business community to drive key initiatives that build and strengthen our economy. And that's a big part of the economic development, sales tax portion that we're requesting funds for. With our organization, you'll see in our application, the amount of volunteers that we really leverage to be able to do the work that we do. And I do want to just call out our board of directors, which is chaired this year by Cassidy Jelmstead, the CEO and general manager of SRT Communications. With our team, I also have with me this evening, Mark Lyman, who is our economic development specialist, and Kelly Roselli Sullivan, who is our workforce development military liaison. And when Kelly's position is actually new, it's one we added to the Chamber EDC team in 2023 to help with our expanding work with workforce development and of course, the ongoing work that we do to support military. I do call out Motor Vehicle, which is also under us. We have a contract with the North Dakota Department of Transportation to do the title work over at Arrowhead. And partially, as we talk through budget requests, this is one of those areas that we actually worked to bring additional revenue sources into the Chamber EDC. And we've had this contract for a number of years. As I always, we've referenced everything we do under these five key pillars. And I'm going to focus tonight on three of them, which is economic development, workforce development, and military support. Those are the three pillars in which we seek funding from the city of Minot. Under economic development, in our goals that we've outlined in our strategic plan, we really have kind of three key goals. One is to advance continued operations of the intermodal ramp, attract new businesses, investing into the logistics park of North Dakota and our community, and lead primary sector development in the Minot area. That's of course, not all encompassing of the tasks and work that we do under economic development, but they're got, the guiding goals that we operate under our strategic plan. When it comes to workforce development, it's a little unique. That was something we added after the 2022 planning cycle for 2023, when the city of Minot tasked us to lead workforce development for the area. And with that work, our, really our goal is to support workforce development solutions. As we know, there's no playbook or cookie cutter solutions to workforce development. And we work really closely with the city, not only on workforce solutions, but also childcare, which I'll go into as we look at our vision forward. And then of course, military support is a big one for our community. Minot isn't Minot without Minot Air Force Base, but it's more than that. It's all of the, the branches and those that serve and choose to make Minot home when they retire. We have a number of veterans in the area too. And really, our goals under military support ties in with us leading the military affairs and appreciation events, fostering a community of support to make military personnel feel welcome at home in Minot, and develop and execute strategic tactics to ensure the US Air Force modernization projects that impact Minot Air Force Base are completed and executed. In addition, our request tonight is to support Task Force 21 and ensure resources to complete the mission of this group. I have on here kind of the ongoing efforts in 2024 highlights. With the request to kind of keep our presentation to five minutes, I'm going to skip over our ongoing efforts and 2024 highlights as we just presented our year end report to city council in January. And we'll be back in front of you within the next month to report on our next, we report. We report back to the city council on our contracting activities in these three areas twice a year. And then obviously, we provide regular monthly communications with our board packet in each of your city council packets. So I'll kind of try to keep our presentation to the requested five minutes and skip through those, but really focusing on our vision for 2025. With economic development, we're going to continue to focus on sustaining the continued intermodal service. And I will share that in January, eight commissioner Doug Goring and myself were in front of the Northwest Seaport Alliance commissioners and really talked through the work that's taking place at the intermodal site. It is exceeding expectations, which is great to see. When we set off to start this pilot program and kind of fix something that the state of North Dakota, city of Minot, county, and so many strategic partners worked on for almost two decades, we really wanted to ensure that we provided continuous operations. The goal within our five-year strategic plan for the intermodal site was to operate one unit train per month. And I'm happy to say that we currently, with our report that we provided to the commissioners in Tacoma and Seattle, we're tracking two to four unit trains per month. We are shipping to 21 different countries and exceeding expectations there. Obviously, there's been a lot of work and partnership in that space, but we want to protect those investments to ensure that we can continue to serve our state and open up our, those that are utilizing the facility to additional global markets. And there's a lot of development underway there. We're obviously working to continue to develop the logistics park in North Dakota, which is owned by the Chamber EDC. And we are a strategic partner with the city of Minot. Some may or may not know, but even with the Surs River Some may or may not know, but even with the SIRS River joint board, the MI5, and now six and seven, which are on the horizon, we've provided, we're providing borrow and backfill to help support those projects, saving the city of Minnetonka over a million dollars with those contracts and efforts. So we want to continue to be a strategic partner in economic development, and there's a lot that we do in that space. We're going to continue to promote our programming. I know Alderman Burlingame, you've called out some of our entrepreneurial programming with Startup Minnetonka. We're going to continue those type of programs, but just wanted to highlight some of the higher level ones. With workforce development, I'm happy to say that we were awarded one of the Regional Workforce Impact Program grants from the state of North Dakota. Again, continuing to look to leverage dollars, not only with our ask of the city, our privately raised funds, member investor dues, and other revenue sources, but we're always looking for ways to bring innovative solutions, especially when it comes to workforce and childcare. So with that, we were awarded $250,000 this year. And with that, you'll see when I go through the budget request, there is a local match of 25% to that, to access the 250 from the state. We're halfway there in allocating our portion of that, and that'll be part of our one-time budget request for you. And then obviously, you guys are all involved in support military at the highest level. We have Alderman Janser, who has been our Task Force 21 chair for a number of years, Mayor Ross serves on Task Force 21, and a number of other volunteers that really support that mission. And I just want to call it a quote from General Bousier, who's the commander of Air Force Global Strike Command. At our Nuclear Triad Symposium in Washington, D.C., and I quote, he stated, "Every week, engage with someone who doesn't understand what we do and the importance of it. Spend three to four, three to five minutes having the conversation about it, because I would offer to you, the mission requires it, our nation needs it, and I think it would help, I truly do." The work that we have been tasked with under Task Force 21 is exceeding the capacity that we've been doing over a number of years. As many of you know, we just rolled off a Nuclear Triad Symposium in North Dakota. We still host one in Washington, D.C. And not only are we trying to educate and advocate at a local level, but we've found the importance of really creating more people that understand the importance of nuclear deterrence. And when General Bousier, the four-star general, is asking us to step up our efforts, we want to be able to do that. The state of North Dakota also recognized that we're not only doing the standard mission of Task Force 21, but we're also working to prepare the city of Minnetonka, the county, and the state for major modernization projects like Sentinel. The state of North Dakota, this last legislative session, implemented base retention funds for the communities of Minnetonka, Grand Forks, and Fargo. We at the Minnetonka Area Chamber EDC, this last biennium, got an allocation of funds to the tune of $850,000 to help support these efforts and do things like host the Nuclear Triad Symposium. One thing I will share with those requests, though, as we're looking at the vision forward, we are trying to leverage as much of, we have to show that we're investing locally, and I'll go through that when I go through the budget request here. So as you look at our 2025 budget request, for economic development and workforce development, we are maintaining level funding requests. For the letter received from the city manager's office and finance department, it spotlighted that there was no proposed increases to revenues, and the goal was to maintain a zero base budget. And we take that work seriously, so we'll continue to work for, look for opportunities like the recent RWhIP grant that we received, and leverage dollars wherever we can to be able to do this. We do have a one-time funding request to the city of Minnetonka for the Regional Workforce Impact Program. As mentioned, we have to come up with 25%, which is the $62,500 locally, and are looking for a one-time request for the city to help us with half of that match with our organization stepping up with the other. And then when it comes to the Air Force Base Retention Funding, there's been level funding in place for Task Force 21 to the tune of $75,000 for at least the last decade. With the increase in activity that we're undergoing, preparing for Sentinel, doing additional things to educate and advocate, as we've been tasked with, this figure is 25% of the state funds. And how we came up with that is we're seeing that when the state of North Dakota is investing in these local activities, they're requesting a local match. This is around the average of what they're requesting. Not only is we're planning for 2025, are we working on the initiatives that we have to report back to the state, for example. Those funds will be reported back and completed by June of 2025. Next year, we'll be also advocating for the next biennium. So I think showing that the city is taking it seriously, raising or supporting base retention efforts is going to help us to leverage additional state funds to support this. And with that, I will say that we have additional revenue sources that we are trying to maximize. We raise funds privately, for example, for Task Force 21, in addition to what the city provides, what we raise through our regular programming. And so this is our request that stands before you today. I'm happy to provide additional highlights or answer any questions, but I'll go ahead and pause there and open up for you.
Are there any questions of Breka? Any questions? Steve?
Comment? Ready for comments?
Sure.
Sure. I have five things to highlight. I guess, first of all, I'm continuing to be pleased by the efforts the chamber is making to improve the well-being, the financial well-being of our community. I guess I look at things a little bit differently. I'm not particularly interested in profits, unlike some people. I see economic development as really strengthening the community in many ways, giving people opportunities they didn't have before, increasing personal freedom, giving people more choices of goods and services. And that's the important thing to me. A strong community is an economically viable community, and the stronger the economy becomes, I think, the stronger the community becomes. So I'm pleased with what we've been doing and the directions we've been going. There are a couple of things I did want to mention, though, that I would like to see maybe focused on a little bit differently. One is that I think the relationship between city staff and what the city does and what your staff does needs to be clarified. As you probably know, I'm doing extensive door-to-door campaigning, and that's something that comes up frequently. People complain, a fair number of people actually complain about all the money where they feel we're not spending wisely on economic development. That's been a recurring theme, and you see it both in candidates who are running for public office and also laypeople when you meet them in their homes and on the streets. I think the necessary things are probably being done, but at the very least, there needs to be better effort to communicate who does what and why. So again, I'm not complaining about what you're doing. I think what you're doing is good, but I think the general public needs to know who's doing what and why they're doing, and what the division of responsibilities is. That is not at all clear to the average person, unfortunately, in my opinion. The second comment I'd make is I would encourage you, as I would any organization, to focus on outcomes, not inputs. We talk about how much money, we talk about staff, things like that, but I think we need to be looking more at outcomes, whether it's crime rates, or I think we are starting to look at now fire losses, things like that. And I think it would be helpful if you could point to things like so many more businesses came to town, or so many jobs got created, or the average salary, the average income of people increased by such and such. You know, even something to like, you know, we now have four restaurants that we didn't have in town before, so you can have a wider choice of things to eat. So I think the, I think more of a focus on what have we accomplished with the money and the programs, I think, would be helpful. The third thing I'd mention, which has been mentioned repeatedly, but I have to say it, is we as a community need to do much more in the area of childcare. And I hope that Alderman Burlingame will eventually come up with a report from his committee. I'm eagerly awaiting that. And I think we need to have this public-private partnership. That'll be a key part of our workforce development program, I think. But, you know, whether the city takes it, or the leadership role, or the chamber, I think we really need to put more energy into that. And part of that is the quality of life and health issue, and even mental health issue. You know, if you don't have to worry about your kids, I think your functioning will be a lot better. And if they have a good environment to grow up in, you know, they'll be healthier. So I see that as a major community priority. And I think that the committee that Scott chaired came up with some good preliminary ideas. The next to last thing I'd mention is that, and this is something you're on top of, is the Sentinel project. I mean, it's going to bring in 3,000 to 5,000 people probably for at least several years. Hopefully, they'll bring their families. Maybe we can entice some of those individuals and their families to stay here. So in the next big construction project, wherever in the world starts, it can be home-based here. People can fly out of here instead of flying out of Houston or someplace, or Oklahoma. So I think that's a potential draw for a significant number of people, and it'll have a major impact on our community. It'll be a drawn-out process with the workers coming here and the technical staff. So that, and I'm glad that you're going out to places like Great Falls to think and plan and see what they're doing, but that will be a challenge for the community. I keep thinking back to the oil boom and the law enforcement and social service resources that were really strained by all the people coming into town, some temporarily. These will be here for a longer duration, but I think still many of the same issues. Where do you house people? How do you educate their kids? How do you get them to bring their kids and their families, things like that. And the final issue I think we need to face as a community, both in terms of public and private activities and partnerships, is the reuse of the Trinity campus. I know it's their property. It's not the city's property. It's not the city's responsibility. And I think you've been taking the lead, your organization, in terms of some creative reuse. The city has done its part by lying for federal money to look for environmental hazards and how extensive those are and what might be required to mitigate them. But I think we do have a real opportunity here. At first, when I heard Trinity was moving, I was just devastated. And then when the IEDC team came, they said, wait a second here, this is going to be a real opportunity for you folks in Minot. I'm not quite as optimistic yet as they were, but I am more optimistic. I mean, this is really a prized piece of real estate and very nicely located. The geographic site poses a few challenges, but, you know, it should be nice if we could reuse parts of the buildings at least, or at the very least, you know, reconfigure the site for the growth of the community. It's right on the edge of downtown. It's a wonderful location. It'll be two blocks from our transit center. But that'll be a real challenge. Like, some people said, we don't want this building to stay open for, you know, 25 years and unoccupied, like the Big M building was. So, you know, I think repurposing, reusing that facility and the land is really a major agenda item for us. So those are just some of my suggestions, some of my input for how things will be going in the future. Again, I'm generally pleased. I think the accountability has come a long way. The transparency has come a long way. You know, we're seeing more and more results. The unit train figures you gave, for example, today were a good instance of that, how this is benefiting the producers, the economy in the surrounding areas, not just the city of Minot. And it helps strengthen our country. You know, it's a very valuable resource that we now have. And I wanted to thank those people who had the foresight some years ago to plan for this and to invest in it. So, you know, my thinking, my overall assessment is I think you're doing a good job, and those are the areas I'd like to see you focus on in the coming future. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Alderman Burlingame, and members of city council. I wish I had a pen so I could write down the responses to each of them. I appreciate the feedback, and I certainly would agree that there's always an opportunity to tell the story. It's easy to spotlight what we do as a community to support military. We not only are home to the Barksdale Trophy, but there's just so many different touchpoints that we do, whether it's collaborating with the leadership that sits in front of me right now, on sending 115 airmen home for the holidays, or raising a record-breaking year with our Prairie War Reaction to support squadrons, you know, tackling things like educating and advocating with the North Dakota Military Symposium, that frankly, we had to shut down registration for because we were at capacity for the event. We now fill up our symposium in Washington, D.C., and are looking for a new venue because all 165 spots fill up right away. And so I think that the outcomes, you'll find some of those in our annual report, whether it be the record-breaking year for ribbon cuttings, when you talk about new businesses opening, or the 20 graduates of our Startup Minnetonka cohort, which is a 10-week program where we help support entrepreneurs in our community. What's been so cool about that is they're coming back in now as member and investors and investing in our community and taking a concept and building this network of entrepreneurs. I think there's a lot of stories to tell. I focused tonight on the request because of the quick response, but frankly, we're more than happy to share those success stories. We try to spotlight those with our annual meeting, which I know a number of you attended, but also, there's a lot of wins in that space. I don't disagree with you on the opportunity to always talk about economic development, because frankly, that's a hard thing to quantify sometimes. There's a lot of work that we do behind the scenes. For example, we're working right now on a natural gas, capturing natural gas, a blue ammonia facility, are working with the state of North Dakota and some key leadership on a mega project, which would be in our Minnetonka area. And we can't talk more about that until some contracts and additional things are signed. Some of those things take a lot of time, too, and effort, and they're a long-term play. Economic development doesn't happen overnight. But even if you look at the intermodal site, frankly, the city of Minnetonka wasn't collecting property taxes on that. It was a project that had a great concept but wasn't coming together. There were some competing interests as far as within, and at the end of the day, the Chamber EDC purchased the land, entered into a business incentive agreement with the city, committing five years of continued intermodal service, and are delivering upon that agreement. And that also is not only the short-term play, but we're also working with our state partners, for example, in that space. And I know SIRS Basin Planning Council is coming up next, but we worked with the Department of Ag because we know that there's opportunities to expand that service and opening up even more opportunities for the agriculture sector. So, for example, the Department of Agriculture put out, following this last legislative session, a grant, which is the Regional Livestock Development Planning Grant, for $203,000 to come into our community to help work with the region. And Bruselda can certainly talk further about that effort, but again, that was one that we helped lobby for, and hopefully will help with further development, for example, with the ag sector. So we're more than happy to share those success stories. And then when you talk about Sentinel, that's part of the additional effort that we're doing with Task Force 21. We're not only building out the core group of volunteers that has historically supported it, but with Sentinel, we're anticipating a workforce of, it's 2,500 to 3,000 today. Now granted, there's a lot of things on hold because of the congressional breach that is in place. The Numa Carti breach is holding kind of discussions on Sentinel until I believe it's July 9th, when that report comes out. But as soon as that comes out and the contractor and Air Force can speak again regarding this, doesn't mean we're not still talking to the communities like Cheyenne and Effie Warren is how to repair it. And then with our task force, our vision is to expand out the task force team to a Sentinel preparation team. And we can hold the relationship side, but at the end of the day, if we're building roads, we're probably going to need the city engineer there to take a look and align with what are they seeing in other communities. So we are working right now on a kind of strategic plan to prepare the state in North Dakota for Sentinel because it is a mega project. And we know not only with the workforce opportunities that are coming, but everything else that you had mentioned. So I know there's probably more, but I'll just pause there, and I'm happy to provide further information, especially on the outcomes. We certainly track those metrics.
Any other questions? Scott?
Yeah, I just want to kind of add on to a little bit to what Steve said there, because one of the conversations we had, and you mentioned it in your response to Steve, was the record number of ribbon cuttings you had last year. And, you know, the old saying is that a lie can travel around the world while the truth is putting their pants on. And there's perceptions out there about how terrible everything is, and the reality isn't really backing that up. The reality is, is there's record numbers of businesses coming into our community. There's record numbers of remodels and refocused and extremely positive economic happenings happening within this community. And one of the hard things is to balance out some of the negativity and to tell those stories. And so the more that you can do, and I think your social media team does a fantastic job, and one of the harder things to say is, they do fantastic, and I wish they would do more. I wish that there would just be more storytelling, because we want to be able to counter that and tell the good story, because that helps to set the mood for our people, and also for people that are looking to further invest within this community and further live within this community, that this is a good place to do business, and there is a lot of good things happening here. And honestly, that really has very little to do with this body as a government, because we probably shouldn't be involved in day-to-day operations, but you as a representative of your member investors in the business community really should be telling, you know, the more you can tell the story, the better it is. So please, I just encourage you to continue to do that and unapologetically tell it until everybody's sick of hearing about how awesome everything is.
Thank you for that, Alderman Burlingame.
Anything else for Breka? Seeing none, thank you, Breka.
Thank you so much.
Next up on the agenda, the Minnetonka Area Council of the Arts. I knew I didn't think I saw anybody. They didn't? Okay. Moving on then to the final presentation is the SIRS Basin Planning Commission.
Did I my presentation on time? Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Ross and members of the council. My name is Bruselda Hernandez, and I am the executive director for SIRS Basin Planning Council. Considering that we may have either one or up to three new council members, I just wanted to take time to go over the purpose, the mission of SIRS Basin, our purpose, who we are, history. And then I take the comment to heart about distinguishing the different roles and responsibilities between all of the different economic development organizations. So I'm just going to focus a little bit on that and just change my presentation a little bit to enter, clarify what we do and how we're different and how we partner with other economic development organizations. So SIRS Basin Planning Council is one of eight regional councils for the state of North Dakota. We were created under the Century Code, so we exist We were created under the Century Code, so we exist by law, and our regional council covers a seven-county area, and up there we have a map of our region, which is seven counties. We have Burke, Renville, Botno, Pierce, McHenry, Ward, and Montreal counties in our region. And every regional council is different, ranging from three counties to over 10 counties. And if anyone is curious in the public and the members of the council, the North Dakota website has the list of all of the regions and the maps of every region. So in terms of how we're different and how we partner with other economic development organizations, not only in Minot but throughout our region, just wanted to clarify a couple of things, specifically here in Minot, since this is pertaining to our request. Through our mission, we support businesses and entrepreneurs primarily through our lending programs. We are the only organization that offers, that provides lending programs for small businesses throughout not only Minot but in our region. We have three programs that we offer to Minot businesses and entrepreneurs. Here is an example of Chaos Games. They received a BAH loan to essentially move it into their new space here in downtown Minot. So through our programs, we, over the last four years, and I included the last four years here, just because we wanted to demonstrate the impact throughout the region, but we also provided a 2023 impact report that has the number specifically for, for last year. But through the last four years, we've assisted about, actually, this number, I apologize there, I don't have the updated number up there, but we, it should be 45 businesses that received financing through our programs, and a little over 2.6 million in loans that were closed in the last five years. And over there, under that amount, you'll see the funds that were leveraged, and just want to clarify that that 51.3 million also includes some public funds, which is only funding that comes from the Bank of North Dakota. So includes private and public funds there, and public being the Bank of North Dakota. And then 635 jobs that were either created or retained throughout our region. So Service Basin Planning Council has been administering revolving loan fund since the, essentially, formation of our organization in the 70s. We received a grant from the Economic Development Administration to establish our first revolving loan fund, and since then, we've created two additional programs to support our businesses throughout our region. The other main service that we provide is really building community capacity, not only in Minot but throughout our region. And we do these through different efforts, different services, one of them being technical assistance, where we try to connect communities, especially our rural communities, with finding funding resources to complete projects such as building a new water tower, or building infrastructure to support their, their main street, helping acquire funding for affordable housing throughout the, the region. But in Minot and throughout our region, we also launched a program to help the nonprofits that make our communities great, and that is our Community Builder Program, which we launched in 2019. This program was really established out of our own need to build our organizational capacity. We found that it wasn't easy for small organizations and our rural communities to access the AmeriCorps resources that are available. So we decided, and our board decided, to open this up to other organizations and communities throughout our region that would like to have an AmeriCorps member to help build capacity. And since we launched that program, we've helped over roughly 49 either organizations and/or rural communities throughout our region and states. We've placed 53 AmeriCorps members in these communities and organizations, and in our slide, we just included there a little bit of information of the hours that were served by these AmeriCorps members. So again, to touch back on just some of the key differences of our, between our organization and the economic development partners that we have throughout our region, we are here to, to be a partner, to be essentially a resource, not only for the communities and businesses, but also the leaders of these economic development organizations that have set goals and strategies, and we can come in and help, help them implement those goals and strategies. Rekka had highlighted the livestock planning grant. I didn't include this in the presentation, but that is a clear example of how we're partnering with the Minot Chamber EDC. We're partnering with every county, we're partnering with our economic development partners throughout our region to essentially develop a strategic plan for every county to identify potential sites for livestock projects throughout our region. And so we all know that agriculture is important to our region, it's important to the city of Minot, and so this is a way for us to promote the development within that industry. So at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about Service Basin.
Any questions? Any questions? Any comments?
Steve, I guess to repeat a comment I've made previously, it's very gratifying to see Service Basin and the community and the city support its rural neighbors. That's one thing I immediately noticed when I moved here from Grand Forks. We, I think, have a much broader sense of community than they do out east, and I think our economy, our well-being, our culture depend on the people who live in the smaller towns, and they obviously depend on us, and it's gratifying to see that mutual interdependence and them receiving the attention, the finances, the technical resources they need to grow and build their communities. Some of the gratifying things about living in Minot is how we are a large community and stick together. So keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none? Thank you.
Thank you.
This time on the agenda, we will move to item number nine, adjournment. Is there a motion?
No move.
We have a motion by Paul, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lisa. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Suppose we are adjourned, good meeting.